Back to their seats, please. Don't make me bang the gavel. I'll do it. Alder Rasmussen, would you mind joining us? Oh, Alder Ryan, I'm sorry. This is what happens. Somebody starts us off. Alder Ryan, would you mind joining us, please?
She's not listening to you.
Thank you. We're ready to continue forward. I don't think we took a motion, did we?
No.
Okay. All right, we're back. Thank you. We are on file number 210605. Resolution from the Economic Development Committee adopting "We Are Wassa." I would entertain a motion. Motion by Neil, second by Watson. We are ready to have a discussion. Okay, we'll start with Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, in order to prevent what happened last time, I would like to make a motion that no motion be entertained to shut the conversation down and that all Alders be allowed to represent their districts per Roberts' rules.
I'm looking at my parliamentarian to see if that's a motion that we can...
I don't think that's appropriate, but I guess if the whole body wants to go along with it and set your rules, that's fine.
Well, I guess I'm saying that because if an Alder can make a motion to shut down discussion, an Alder should be able to make a motion to continue one.
Well, the proper motions are to refer back or to call the question. I mean, those are used strategically that sometimes do result in terminating discussion earlier than some would like, but I think it's inappropriate, Mayor, unless the rest of the council doesn't object if they want to agree to that. Not entertaining any certain types of motions, that's up to the body to decide their rules.
Okay, so the motion is to... Could you repeat that one more time?
I would like to make a motion to not entertain any motion to shut the conversation down on this and that every Alder be able to represent their district as per Roberts' rules, as we did not get a chance to do that last time.
Okay, so we have a motion to not entertain any other motions, to shut conversation down. We have a second by Killian. Is there any discussion on this, Mr. Neil, or would you... Nope, okay. All right, we're voting on. I'm just gonna have to give us one second while we type this in.
All right, you may begin voting. Motion passes seven to three with one abstention.
Okay, so, moving on, I have Alder Neal on the docket.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Lou, for... That was a first for me, and, you know, interesting. It needed to be done. Well, you know, I certainly, you know, welcome discussion, you know, to its fullest. And sometimes when you... When we ask to send something back for further work, it's not really to quash a discussion, but merely to get maybe a better product before the body, but that's, I guess, always a moot point. I have a short, prepared statement here, which I'm going to read, so I'm not gonna ad lib it like I want to do sometimes, and which leads me to say things like, you know, talking about people's, you know, legitimacy to be parents and such, which I'm not very proud of, saying things like that off the cuff, and when I do say it, I get caught. So, yeah, be careful. Prepare your statements, might be a better idea. Why does some support this declaration and others oppose it? You know, I see yard signs all over District Four that support it. I have personally received overwhelming positive response. People of color and members of the LGBTQ community support it, but I also see plenty of straight white people of all ages who support it. So where is this opposition coming from? I know we've had some people appear here, so there's some people that have stood up and voiced their opposition. Also recently saw this local ad in the city pages. Many of you maybe have seen it. I think it ostensibly is referring more so to the Community for All resolution before the county board rather than this particular resolution, but I find it's probably got a lot of overlap and probably a lot of relevance in our discussion, too. This is from an anonymous source who just identify themselves as tinyurl.com/knowca21. It references the Community for All resolution as being racist. It makes, quote here, "It makes everything about race, gender, sexual orientation, et cetera, not about content of character. This resolution is also unconstitutional. It violates our freedom of speech and fair and equal protection for all under the law." It's kind of an unqualified statement, but there it is. The ad goes on to say that this resolution is a wolf in sheep's clothing. Do not be fooled. Equity is not equality. Equity means equal outcomes for all. This is critical race theory, CRT. These ideologies will destroy America. This is kind of the caliber of commentary I'm seeing in opposition to what we're looking at here tonight. You know, the "We Are Wassa" resolution is meant to acknowledge that people's differences aren't consistently respected and to express a determination to move above and beyond all forms of bias and exclusion. The resolution, to anyone who reads it, clearly does not declare that bias is running rampant. It simply states that we still see an uneven playing field with barriers that disproportionately affect certain marginalized segments of our community. I firmly believe that those expressing this opposition represent a very small fraction of our population, really, but they can be fervent in promoting their views and they can be out there, too. We, as a community, need to respond with a unified voice that says everyone deserves respect, a fair shake, equal treatment and opportunity, not equal outcomes as this ad falsely claims. Let's not just assume that ours is a community for all. Let's declare it with conviction. Let's make it part of our city's strategies and policies. Refusing to do so sends a distinctly different and damaging message to our residents and to everyone who we want to have a positive attitude toward our town. That's all I'm gonna say about that.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. First, I want to be clear that my goal, and I think everyone else's goal, who referred this item back to economic development for a little rework, our goal was not to stop it or kill it or whatever, or stifle a healthy discussion. It was to emerge out the other side with a better product. And what we got in the committee was a completely reworked product. And I will say that it is way better than the original, but my goal in the committee in proposing some changes to it was to find us a product that would gain the backing of more people, more segments of our population. And, you know, we had a... I'll call it a heated discussion last Tuesday night about what seemed to be simple changes. And, you know, my effort to find common ground with a larger segment of our population isn't about loyalty to one side or the other. It doesn't have to be. And at the end of the day, we need to find a way to bring our community together and find common ground with people that we might disagree with. And so, you know, everyone, I think the revisions that I proposed in the committee were included in the packet tonight. You can see that the changes that were proposed, I thought, really got us to a better place. Others thought that that made the statement too aspirational. To that, my response was that there's nothing wrong with aspiring to things that are better. But at the end of the day, that did not pass. And so I think that while we started out on the right foot with a new product, I don't feel that we have enough common ground. I mean, the feedback that I've received in my district, and we all need to recognize that different districts have different priorities and they often want different things and they value different things. I have people, dozens of people, that have been telling me for months that we need to get back to the work of the city that includes things that we are here to manage, and I've listed those before. And they have asked that we stop lofty social policy discussion and get down to the brass tacks of governing at the local level. And most of those items shouldn't be controversial because they're, you know, things like budgets and assessments and taxation and planning and things that most people can agree on that make an immediate impact. And so with that, I have had exactly three people in District Seven indicate support for this. There are not signs all over my district, but I've had dozens of people come to me and ask me that if we can't come to a product that includes a larger segment of our total population, not to support it. And it was ironic, the tone of the conversation that we had in the Economic Development Committee, because we lost sight completely of the fact that we were asking one another to pass a resolution about acceptance. And yet, an idea that was different than what was presented was met with vitriol. And an entire segment of our population, whether we agree with them or not, was really maligned viciously. And, I mean, that's a sad situation for us to be in as a community. We have to accept the fact that people that don't agree with us live here, too. And I just don't feel that we have a product that, you know, and my whole point with revising the language was that if you know that certain terminology has been problematic in the past, if it was problematic down the street, if it was problematic here, start somewhere else. And it wasn't about, you know, trying to kill the whole process, but if you know that you're gonna have an uphill battle and you're trying to find the right words, start with different words, and you may find that people are more likely to meet you in the middle. But I didn't feel that we were meeting in the middle. And I don't feel that we've come far enough to meet in the middle with what we have here.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I've heard the commentary about let's get back to business, you know, we've got roads and infrastructure and all this. This isn't government business. Well, I'll remind this council and perhaps my colleagues who are on prior councils that the city was hemorrhaging on subsidies to developers. Like a citizen pointed out earlier, there was the France debacle. There was the Thomas Street Project debacle, which may have been the last nail in the former mayor's political coffin. There were CBL debacles. So, you know, it appears to be less of a fiscal bloodbath when we actually pay attention to the concerns on the ground from our citizens. And I think there's a fundamental mistake. It's a mistake that's often made in business as well. Mr. Neal in marketing for many years may agree. So when you're talking about emotional and functional benefits, that actually it's often the emotional benefits that are most persuasive in communications. Now, that doesn't mean if we're gonna use kind of corporate, let's run our government like a corporation, which I'd rather not do, but let's use the term product. That doesn't mean you can't not have a good product, but it does mean that to dismiss emotional concerns and things, let me point them out so they're not so vague, trust in government, feeling that your government cares. As one citizen said earlier, feeling that your government sees you. These are important, and for other government business to go well, you must start at that place. And without those fundamentals, you have nothing. And what you'll have next cycle is a guy like me from a neighborhood that was dismissed and told to pound dirt on policy, but we were spending millions and millions of dollars on things that a neighborhood and much of the community did not want. And now we find ourselves in a precarious position. Let's talk about that neighborhood and other areas like it. So is that a community for all? I mean, when you kick people out of their homes and bulldoze them to spend $1.2 million for a fancy river edge trail, is that a community for all? When you start in 2002, you don't get mon language translation, not one darn summary for the project because it's locally funded, and I won't spend my time reminding you why it wasn't federally funded. Is that a community for all? When not even everyone can participate? So we must ask ourselves those questions. Let's talk about the France debacle again in the East Riverfront, right? What was that 2012, 2013 application that's in our packet? We monetized people's plights for federal funds, and then we spent it building upscale developments that the people we told the EPA and the federal government we were gonna help could never afford to begin with. Is that a community for all? So obviously not. And this is something that the left and right, if we need to segment it in such a primitive way, that they would agree on, that the fiscal mess we have found ourselves in has a lot to do with telling our own people that we don't give a damn about what they think. And had we, we wouldn't have ended up in those economic development misadventures. It not only would have been more productive for the community, there would have been more unity, we wouldn't be tens of million dollars in debt for these misadventures. So let's get real, let's be objective, and let's not dismiss that how people think and how they feel, let's not dismiss that. That's very important. That's where good government starts, so let's get to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's been some very interesting points brought up, and I support both Alder Killian and Alder Neal's positions on this. And I would like to say that, you know, I come from a very diverse district. There's a lot of people of all ethnics around in my district, and they want justice for all because they don't always get justice for all. And one thing I would let, another thing, not to put anybody on the spot or anything, but the Economic Development Meeting was brought up the other night and was talking about, and I would just, I'm not on that committee, but I was at that meeting. And I would just like to point out that, you know, four of five, you know, when we talk about working together and getting stuff done, four of five of the changes that were proposed from Alder Rasmussen on the resolution were accepted. One wasn't. And so because one wasn't, she was the only vote that voted it down. So where's the represent, who are you representing? And wow, I just, I just, you know, we all need to start, stop nitpicking and work together, you know? And, you know, if you're gonna tell a story, tell it straight, you know? Get all the facts out, because there's two sides to every story. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Peckham.
Thank you, Mayor. There was a lot of meet, I think, in the Economic Development Committee meeting a week ago today, and I think there were some very good thoughts brought out. But here we are tonight. I think if in the, I guess it's the sixth whereas, if the word equity was not in there, I think we probably wouldn't be having this difficulty gathering around this and getting it through. But I would just have to say that the concern over that word and the insistence on the part of some in the community that equity means you're gonna take something from me to give it to somebody who didn't earn it is bogus. And I think Alder McElhaney's comments at the Economic Development Committee meeting about equity and what it means and how important it is were crucial, and perhaps she would repeat them because I thought that he really kind of brought it down to earth. Equity is not an evil word. It's not tricky. It's a straightforward word. And I don't know if Ms. McElhaney minds being put on the spot, but I hope we are able to embrace this and pass it tonight.
Thank you. Alder McElhaney.
Thank you. I will talk about my experience with the word equity, which is a root of equitable. It is not a mean word, and I was really taken aback, and I feel very badly that people came to this podium thinking, "I..." And I'm only gonna speak for me, that you think I'm calling anybody a racist, a bigot, biased? That is not my... Anyone who knows me knows that. That was not my intention in supporting this at all. And it is, I don't believe it's the intention of this resolution. I am speaking to those who are in marginalized communities, populations in our community. There are some. You are very fortunate if you've never experienced it. I have because of my family. And I am not gonna bring up, I feel like I use him a lot, so I'm not gonna talk about him specifically, but I will talk about my work in the community. I work with a nonprofit that works with people with disabilities. There is a problem. I'm not telling anybody they're racist or biased. It may be unknowing. It may be a fear of how do I interact? It could be anything. I don't think that, this is a very great and wonderful community and accepting. I absolutely agree with all of it. I don't see this as saying, "Look, I'm picking this community apart." That is not my intention with this, and I know I disappointed a couple people really, really badly, and I feel very, very bad about this. And I've thought about it for a long time. I had one person call me and state, "But you're calling me a racist, and you're trying to bully me to do something." And I said, "What am I trying to bully you into because I don't understand?" So I truly don't understand. But I will tell you about equity and people with disabilities. And I will use what I've used in discussing this with my, with the two people that called me. And I did, you know, in Alder Rasmussen's, I had 47 people from my district in favor of it. Okay, but the two people, I said, "Here's equity. Think about school." I think Ms. Lowell had said it before. School. When we go to send people to school, we don't have one curriculum and say, "Every kid goes through it. If you get it, good. If you don't, too bad." We have remedial classes. We have special ed. We have tutors. We try to catch up. We have English as a second language. We start young. We're starting out with 4K. We didn't have that before. To give equity. It isn't to give people, does everybody that come out of school get equal outcomes? Absolutely not. I do not see equity as equal outcomes. I see that as giving them the best chance because what do we want? People got a school. We want them to get a job, to be productive citizens, and do the best they can. I've always told my children, "There will always be somebody smarter, faster, stronger than you." There's never going, you will never have that, you know, be equal, or you're never going to be the smartest ever. Be the best you can be. That's what this is telling me. And I really, it breaks my heart that people think that if, when I support this, that means they're a racist, because that is not my intention. I grew up in this community. I served this community. I work in this community. I do not feel people are racist and biased. I am talking to the marginalized people that I work with every day that are treated sometimes poorly by some and saying, "I can't help those people, but I can tell you, we're with you." That is why I'm doing this. So Alder Peckham, was that what I said? Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I support, I support the comments made by Alder McElhaney with respect to school and outcomes and how different people learn differently. And I believe economically, people also start out in different places. There's certainly no way to dispute that. But I also think that the split is obvious, that is existing in this community because for as much as someone called her a racist for supporting it, I was called one this week for not supporting it. And so no matter what you do, somebody somewhere is gonna call you that. And I think anybody that would take, you know, most people out there know us in 30-second sound bites. They know what they read in a headline. They know what they might hear in a snippet of one of these meetings, but most people have no clue who we are or what we're about. And the fact that she and I have both been called the same thing and we're on opposite sides of this should be very telling to what we are up against in this community. And all I can do is represent my residents, and all you guys can do is represent your residents. But the feedback that I've been getting in mine says that they feel this is unnecessary. They feel like this is further fanning the flames of division and that if we can't find wording that gets us to the middle where everybody feels like they can get behind the product we have here, then no. And I asked a question in a couple different meetings, the day after this passes, the week after this passes, or a year after, what is any different for anybody? Because if there's not gonna be some, like, roll up your sleeves and dig into some substantive real work, you're gonna get people all excited about this change, and ultimately, the population of Wassa is no different. The people that disagree with us on this are no different. Their behavior is unchanged. I just, I guess I fail to see what impactful change something like this makes, other than to just continue the same fights.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So let's take a minute just to dissect some of the angles on this, and we're seeing some repeats from the environmental justice discussion as well. And I think if there's a benefit of belaboring certain things that don't need to be belabored, it's that ultimately, especially tonight, they seem to run into contradictions. And when we reach those contradictions, we can kind of then identify at least one, if not two, of those parts as fallacious reasoning. So let's look at what's been said, that language is very important. Obviously, I agree. You know, English Lit was my undergrad, and I would say that, you know, language is important on many levels. I mean, it's inherently symbolic. It's how we communicate. And so without it, we really wouldn't be doing much of anything. But so let's focus on that, number one, the importance of language, the impact of language on feelings. And as we know, feelings often lead to action. So we have the importance of language. Now, within a couple minutes, we heard the exact antithesis of that argument from the same representative, that this is just language, so it doesn't matter. So the first question would be, which one is it? And frankly, unfortunately, I think for the body, I know the answer, that it's, that language does matter. So, you know, down the road, if we just want to prohibit resolutions altogether, I'd like to hear that argument. But until then, we do have resolutions. And just from language, as we just talked about, I think we've confirmed that now, that language is very important and it has an impact, then we know that this does matter. It does do something. I mean, disagree with, you know, there can be debate and disagreement, but I think we've come to the place now that we've been able to tease out that it's a fallacious argument to say that this word matters and that matters, but then to say that a resolution doesn't matter because, let's face it, a resolution is really just kind of a composite of language. So now that we've got that covered, let's talk about certain words. These are being, you know, and we talked about parties earlier, and I think the problem is... is, in my opinion, they tend to pimp out belief sets, right? So, they'll leverage that when it's advantageous, and sometimes, you know, you've tried to pick a winner, and that winner just turns his or her back on you, and that doesn't much matter anymore, right? So, let's put that aside and look at the term equity, now that we've gotten rid of kind of that false binary lens. And what do we know about equity? Anyone ever use it? Well, yes, the George Bush administration in the early 1990s, George H.W. Bush, environmental justice, he created the office of, let's hear it, Environmental Equity. Now, how could that socialist do that? I didn't know Bush was so far out there and kind of colluding with Moscow. Obviously, that's asinine. So, no, equity has been used. And when you look at different acts, you know, introduced by Republicans, like Transportation Equity Acts, and Education Equity Acts, and Senior Citizen Equity Acts, that term comes up again and again. So, I think both parties historically have gotten past these kind of, you know, artificial divisions and realized that's a word, it has a legitimate meaning, and that meaning is in this resolution. So, I think, you know, in this debate on both sides of the issue, I would say, let's all remember we're Wausonians, and let's not allow an artificial divide. Let's not be played, and let's not be pieces on a chessboard. That term is equity. It has a definition, and Democrats and Republicans use it all the time historically. So, it's a significant word. Resolutions mean something, because language means something. And now we know equity is not some weaponized communist term. So, I'd say, let's, please proceed to supporting this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm not seeing anybody else ready to speak, so I think it's time to vote. In a second. Oh, you just pushed your button. I guess we're not ready to vote. Alda Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I am not a native of Wausau, but I've lived here since 98, and I consider Wausau my hometown. Before moving here, my husband and I were living in Kenosha County, and he was doing a census analysis of the community, and I was, I was reading the Wausau Daily Herald, the Sunday edition. And it did concern me, that I felt like there was a little bit of a time warp compared to my working with refugees, agencies in Chicago back in the 80s, and in coming to Wausau, that I felt like we were a generation behind. But, things have improved since I moved here in 98. I was working at Catholic Charities back in early 2000 for five years, and Jason Cram from Lutheran Social Services was a designated agency to bring in new refugees that were Mung. And Jason called me and said he wanted to let the community know about what was happening. And he just thought that, okay, I'll meet with Deb, and we'll go from there. And I said, "Well, no, not really, Jason. We have all these other community partners out there, and we're going to come together and meet." And we met at the United Way Riverview Office, River Drive Office. There was over 50 partners. And looking at furniture that, we learned the history about the people that were coming that were Mung. It happens, there was a videotape from a student at UW-Madison, had lived in Thailand at the refugee camps for like three months. So, we had access to all that background of where they were coming from. And as part of that, one of, one of the other people at the group, Tom Rouse, said, "I have storage space at Neighbor's Place, and we're going to use that for furniture." Well, we worked with the community and other volunteers, other agencies. We filled that up with furniture, and pots and pans, and bedding. And we came together as a community. And I had recently heard about the new refugees that might be coming, and because I have contacts and previous time in, back in the 80s in Chicago, I had done some other research in calling my other contacts on that. So, and it just seems that we don't have that community like we did back in 2003 and '04. And I'm concerned about that. And I talked to Mr. Jeong about, recently, about, is there somehow that maybe the new refugees can be based in your office as a way to be more accepting? That, at the time, when the last refugees had come from Thailand, we had Lutheran Social Services and Catholic Charities in our state, in our region, that was a faith-based groups that were coming in, and people were more willing to hear and be involved. But I was directly involved. I drove the big security realty truck with two Mung adults picking up furniture all over the area, and that I also met with some families, that one family in St. Etienne, he had three different families that were coming. And so, temporarily, he had 30 people living in his home, until they could actually find other housing. The city came together about how to have a waiting list for housing, and so that it, we all came together to do it. My concern is, we're not there. At times, I feel like there's younger people that are looking at us older ones and questioning, "Are you doing enough?" And they, some seem to have this kind of chip and think we were all entitled. I grew up in the, I grew up in the UP. I was the fourth of five. But, I was the first one in my family to get a college degree. I was the first one in my family to get a master's degree. My other siblings got married in their 20s and delayed and had children. But I put in hard work. But back in the 70s, when I was going to school, it was 5% women in accounting. Also, for doctors, very few women. That has changed. We have evolved. And some of it has evolved with some of the younger people, that you don't know that history, or you may not have learned it from your family or from other mentors, but there's been other people that I've admired along the way, that were there for me, and that, and I don't feel that we've come as being a chip on our shoulder, or expecting that we were somehow entitled or privileged. And when Tom Neal made those statements, I just thought, "What are you talking about, Tom? You're about the same age as I am." And women's opportunities have grown in the last decades. So, and then the Mung population, they have the opportunities of being whatever they want to be. And back in the 2000s, I became a volunteer for the YMCA, mentoring young Mung teenagers with others that wanted to have opportunities for women, and not feel like they were only in a patriarch society. And in growing up, it seemed the rules back then were, you know, a mixed and kind of disastrous relationship.
Point of order.
Is being Irish and marrying someone Italian.
I'm sorry, the point of order is non-debatable. Your point of order is, are you saying, "We're not German?"
I'm just saying, by point of order, we're getting off the topic here. We're talking about the resolution today, not something 20 years ago.
But it's our history of where we've evolved. And I think some of our younger people don't understand, we have evolved over decades. And once you consider back in the 70s or 60, a mixed marriage was an Irishman marrying an Italian. That's not the case. We don't look at it that way anymore. We look at it as with...
Call for orders of the day.
Okay. So, that's a different one than one we usually use?
Well, she said about eight minutes. You didn't want to cut off anybody and let everybody be able to say whatever they wanted to. She hasn't finished her 10 minutes yet, but I'll leave that to the chair.
So, when you call for the orders of the day, are you asking, I just want to confer quickly with the parliamentarian?
And I guess this is why, in the rules, I said with people with disabilities, are they going to be cut off? So, things have changed over the decades. We are evolving.
We have a, we have a call.
I have accepted the award for the Mung Association for Catholic Charities over 30 years ago. It was handed to me to give to our agency, how they work together. We are evolving. We're not always there yet, but you should not discount that we are working on it. And I grew up in a patriarchal society, but I learned from my dad and from my family, it was matriarchal. And so, it is not as much patriarchal.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt.
And we, as women, haven't liked to say so.
We've had a parliamentary request.
And that I do encourage that we need to evolve, and that I'm being mistreated and being discriminated against, and it's not right. Thank you.
Alda, I just, I wanted to let you know that we had a parliamentary, and I paused your time. The call to order of the...
But I was just, I was... I was interrupted, and I imagine in the rules, are you going to discriminate and interrupt an older person, especially that we have some with disabilities? And as you can see tonight, it did happen multiple times.
Thank you, Alda. So, the question, the parliamentary request from your alder was a call to order of the day. The parliamentarian has advised me that this doesn't quite fit. We are kind of, we are on the agenda topic. However, maybe the request was actually the call to question that you were inferring? But, Alda Ryan, you have a minute and a half left, if you'd like to finish.
The call for an order of the day is to request that an item that's agendized be taken up in its proper order on the agenda, and that's what we're doing. That was the reason for my advice.
What does that mean? Do you need to continue?
You have a minute and a half left.
What does your statement mean? Was I in violation or not?
No, I don't think the call for the orders of the day was the appropriate objection to make, because that means that we're not taking up the proper order of business in the proper order as it's been agendized, and we are, in my estimation.
Again, explain that. I don't know what you're talking about.
There was a parliamentary objection, and after we conferred, we determined that that objection was not valid, and you may continue. You have a minute and a half left.
Well, I guess we need to do some more training on the rules.
Can you turn your mic on, please?
We need to do some more training on the rules, because I did express my concern in the Rules Committee, that this could happen, and it did happen. So, we are evolving. We have a history. We've had some pretty incredible people being trailblazers. And it, you, just because you're older doesn't mean you're racist. But I also wanted to say, I reached out on Facebook to the group about the Community for All, and in less than an hour, I was kicked out. And they didn't realize that they were talking about me, and I had access to some of that information. And I guess I'm, I don't want to belabor it, but it's kind of ironic that members of the Community for All want to tear down, and, and some of them, no matter what you do, they're going to consider you a racist or a bully, and not helping the community, which I've done for decades as part of my life. And that it's not appropriate for even some of those people to be snarking and being belittling. To me, it really shows that some of them are very shallow and don't understand the history of how we have evolved as neighbors and people.
Your time has expired. Thank you, Alda Ryan. I believe with that, we are ready to vote. Oh, one moment.
Okay, you may begin voting. The motion passes nine to two.
All right, thank you. All right. We are now going back into presentation mode. I have been informed that the presentation might be a little shorter than it was at Finance.
Yeah, and, you know, I think that there was two planned commission items on the agenda. I didn't know if there was someone who made the agenda.
No waiting for those?
Oh, you didn't?
No.
Oh.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, I was just reading here. Sure. Thank you.
All right. Finance Director Mary Ann Groth is ready with support from our IT Director, Jerry.
Three minutes.
The request has been made for three minutes. I don't think that's going to happen.
Okay, so, hopefully, everybody can hear me. Can you hear me okay? I'm going to take off my mask. So, I'm here, we're here to give a presentation on ERP software, which stands for Enterprise Resource Planning. This is going to be one of the largest IT undertakings that the city has attempted in, you know, I don't know when we've done something this big. I outlined all of the areas that we will be touching in this implementation. You can see that it's going to probably impact every department and potentially every employee in the city. There's, I've outlined 27 different components. We are really, our goal is to retire our Kianta software, which we purchased back in 1993. And that software has, while we've done upgrades to it, it has not kept pace with modern technology. And as a result, we're using outdated technology, and we are leaving a lot of efficiencies undone. So, we went through an extensive selection process. It took us one year to get to the recommendation of Workday. We hired an outside consultant who helped us through the RFP and selection process. We used an oversight committee with members from CCITC and the county and city finance and HR personnel. But we involved all stakeholders. The process started by sending out a survey to all departments, asking them about what they see are the strengths and weaknesses of our current software, what are the needs that they have for future software. And that became the requirements that were outlined in our RFP. We received 12 proposals. We, the Oversight Committee, reduced it to the top three vendors, and we did demonstrations over eight days. Those were organization-wide demonstrations, so all stakeholders were invited to attend. Once we were done with that, the Oversight Committee spent hours with references in interviews. These are not like five-minute interviews. Those were hour-long interviews in our, we were trying to determine how implementations went, how support of the software in maintenance and upgrades, what kind of efficiencies they gained during, after implementation. And they were very enlightening references. These are not like five-minute interviews. Those were hour-long interviews. And our, we were trying to determine how implementations went, how support of the software in maintenance and upgrades, what kind of efficiencies they gained during, after implementation. And they were very enlightening references. We, after that, narrowed it down to two vendors. We again conducted organization-wide sessions where members of the staff were able to get in there and actually use the software, test drive those two top vendor software, pay a bill, look things up, process a purchase order, those kinds of things. And then based, and we also talked to the vendors about their approach and things. When we were all done with all of that process, it was a unanimous selection of the Workday. So, we've got a lot of people in both the city and the county heavily invested in the process. Have, we've used internal resources as well as actually external resources to get to this step. We had some major goals that we were trying to accomplish. One is to move to a more electronic workflow and approval to eliminate all of our paper-based processes, which are so time-consuming, and eliminate a lot of the extra manual entries, to improve our processes over multi-year projects like capital grants or projects or grant management, to use technology to, for things like electronic payments, for modern file transfers that we are lacking in our current software, to increase our collaboration with Marathon County, to improve data access for employees and managers and directors through things like dashboards and portals, to improve our financial reporting so that we could, if we spend less time chasing around transactions, we should be able to spend more time doing a better job purchasing things from vendors, analyzing information and making better decisions. So, we want to spend less time on that transaction processing and more time thinking about ways to do things better. One of the major things that came out of it was increasing our collaboration with the county. In nineteen ninety-three, when we put in Kianta, while we did take advantage of bulk purchasing because we are using the same software and it, there is some time savings in IT, we stayed in our own little silos. So, we each had our own chart of accounts. We used the chart of accounts that we had. We maintained all of our processes as we had previously. And so, there were no benefits of us working together and sharing that software. Today, we will be using one chart of accounts, one vendor list, one customer list, and we'll be establishing standard processes. I was looking back and I think that's a real key to how we're going to increase efficiency. I was looking back, you know, in nineteen oh one, the production line and manufacturing was established. And the goal was to increase efficiency by standardizing the process and allowing people to work as efficiently as possible. And, you know, the estimates are productivity increased five hundred percent. That's really what we're trying to do here with our accounting functions is to really improve our efficiency on those so we can all spend less time chasing around paper to get our work done. So, again, we have multiple bottlenecks that take place. Just to give you a couple of ideas, you know, Kianta is an old and what, you know, we all kind of consider it a broken process or a system. You know, in, we use different software for budgeting because Kianta doesn't have a budgeting component to it. It wasn't until March when we were able to upload that into our accounting system so that departments were able to compare their budget to actual because it just wouldn't load. And this is not the first year that we've had this happen. We encounter it every year. We have problems with, Kianta is a very year-driven, year, fiscal year-driven. And so, it uses data sets to keep track of information by your fiscal year, which for us is a calendar year. But there's little weaknesses in the software when, when you have a department who maybe is in the wrong year in the data set, but dates something in the previous year that the software, instead of just not allowing them to do it, it allows them to, but it throws the parts of the transaction into multiple years and into like a nine-nine-nine year. And then you cannot remove them. So, in July of this year, we were finally able to clear out the mistakes that were made last December with these stray transactions where someone was in the wrong year. And so, these are some of the frustrations. Kianta is a Canadian company. They have sixteen U.S. customers. So, for example, with all of the changes that took place in the federal government when they revised the federal tax law for standard deductions and things like that and people needed to enter in new W4s, we had to try to convince Kianta that this was a high priority item because with only sixteen customers, it just doesn't reach to the top. And so, we were, you know, concerned. We were into that year and we didn't have the new tax charts yet because Kianta wouldn't load them into their system. It really has become very problematic. It's also problematic because the software is not easy to use. And when you have department directors who are wanting to check things in their budget, they have to be somewhat educated in Kianta to actually be able to see these things. Modern software uses things like dashboards and portals so that people can access data without having to know the software intimately. And I think that's really going to help our department directors and managers manage their budgets and manage their departments very, much more accurately. We also have a payroll system that is extremely cumbersome to use. And again, we need to have processes that are easy to use so that as we experience turnover, which we're experiencing more and more turnover as we move to a more transient workforce, and we need to be able to transfer work institutional knowledge in an efficient way. And we cannot do that today. One of the areas that we were particularly concerned about because it has hit locally where we've had local governments and local businesses with security breaches and with being held hostage by ransom-type activity, that our new software have very strong security, cybersecurity processes and software in place. Our security people evaluated Workday and were extremely impressed by the quality of the cyber security and the, the systems that they had in place. And this is just some samples of, you know, what type of activity we're seeing out in the world as far as the cost of data breaches. So, another big thing that we're trying to accomplish is to get rid of paper. This is just a sampling of the paper documents that we use to try to do our work every day. And those are pushed manually through the department. So, they start out, let's say, with an administrative assistant who wants to pay a bill. She enters it into the system. She prints out documents. She submits that to her department manager or her department director for signature. That director opens their mail, looks at it, signs it, sends it to Finance, where it ends up in mine or the Assistant Finance Director's box. We have to put approval on it. Then it finally goes in for processing. And, you know, when people are on vacation, when people are sick, that process of pushing paper around is very time-consuming. And then we bundle it all up and we send it to an external consultant who scans it all in to get it into electronic format. Our new software will, these items, the invoices from a vendor, other documents will be scanned in and attached to the transaction immediately. And then the approvals will be done electronically with that workflow. So, it will improve our time period for processing documents and make it more accessible to all. In Finance, it will improve reconciliations and oversight. In HR, it will approve, improve things like being, employee being able to access through a portal their W2, to be able to change their W4, to put in a change of address, to sign up for health insurance, which today is a totally manual process. So, and it will start on onboarding of the employee and include training. I'm really excited about the opportunities for the city and county to collaborate. As I said, we are going to be sharing vendor lists and single customer lists and standardizing our workflow. But there's other benefits that we could potentially reach. You know, as we, I, I think about things like as we share that vendor list, we're going to see things that we have in common. And it may allow more communication between us where we could actually start joint purchasing things. Like we'll be comparing our vendor list and, oh, we're purchasing X, you're purchasing X. Why don't we just issue one RFP and purchase it for all? And I really think that there is, that's just like the tip of the iceberg. By developing standardized practices, we can do efficient staff training, put together YouTube videos on how to process accounts payable check. And we can use it across organizations and improve our knowledge share. In the last five years, I think the, probably the most startling thing for me as a government employee is to see how transient our workforce has become back from, you know, the first twenty years that I worked for the city and how it really has changed our focus on trying to move that institutional knowledge from one person to the other and how disruptive it is to a department when you lose that institutional knowledge. And I think that this software is really going to help us. And I think it's very key because, you know, we've pointed out when people don't have institutional knowledge, we're a very compliance-oriented organization. And when we don't know about compliance issues, we make mistakes and they can be costly. And so, I think, you know, this transferring of institutional knowledge is probably one of the biggest risks that we have and something that we need to be better at. You know, this, some of these slides were put together by the vendor, the software vendor. When you look at our budget, thirty-four million dollars for personnel costs, thirty-three million for other operating expenses. If we can spend less time chasing around transactions, it allows us to focus our time on doing a better job servicing our customer, which is our taxpayers and our citizens. And, you know, while cost savings is great, I also think it can result in freeing up dollars to do a better job and investing those dollars in things like the streets. And I think that is something that, you know, we will see happen. Again, just for samples, they're saying that, you know, payrolls average error rate of one to two percent. I think that we do a good job in the department. We have good cross-checks and review of payroll processes. We have a very excellent payroll person who is very detail-oriented. But when you look at thirty-four million dollar payroll and we say one percent, what they're saying is the average of errors, that's three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. I would say we don't have that level of errors, but it, it leads you to that exposure. When we needed a new payroll person, we actually, our old payroll person told us two years in advance that she was retiring. We had someone in, so they had a year and a half of training. And they needed that year and a half because our system is so cumbersome today. But if that person decided to leave in two weeks, again, we've tried to do a good job of cross-training, but we need systems that people can pick up and use without a year and a half of training. Again, other areas, this is, you know, an area of when we can collaborate on purchasing. Even if we can save one percent, it's still true savings. So, I really think that there is some great opportunities with this software to be transformational within the organization. Another area that we spent a lot of time with our references that I mentioned was how they maintain the software so that innovation remains current. And, you know, that was one of the, the big things that drove us between our first and second choice is that, you know, this will be software as a service. All of the references, and we talked to both private sector and government references, gave outstanding marks to Workday on their work that they did to maintain it as modern technology and the efforts that they did to make sure that when they rolled the technology out, that it had been thoroughly tested. Because when we talked to some other vendor references, that was not the case. And so, some of those references said that, you know, they didn't even put in upgrades because they'd had such bad experience. But that's not the case with Workday. Here is kind of a list of customers that are Workday customers today. You can see that they have a stronghold in the government sector. In fact, when we started out this process, we probably would have worked in our little silos and kept our own chart of accounts and, and vendor lists. It was really Workday that brought this concept to us through work that they've done with Denver County and City and another one I can't think of offhand. What's that?
Omaha.
Omaha, yeah. And so, it was really their idea. And locally, you know, Marshfield Clinic is using it. North Central Tech has signed a contract with Workday and is just starting their implementation. So, there's a lot of major companies using the software that we think that it will be in existence. So, why are we bringing this to you today? So, like I said, we started out a year ago in trying to develop the RFP. We didn't really know at that point how long it was going to take us. We didn't know how long it would take to implement because we have not done this since nineteen ninety-three. And in, now that we have vetted the process, when we look at the schedule, we want to be able to go live on January first of twenty twenty-three because for things like payroll where you're tabulating a year for your W2s to make sure that your payroll taxes are done timely and submitted properly, it's good to either go at, ideally at the first of the year or on a quarter. But when you backdate and step past all of the milestones for implementation, we really need to keep our momentum going. And that requires us to sign a contract in September. Now, we have budgeted in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, first to hire the consultant and then for some seed money. We have not concluded our twenty twenty-two budget. But if we sign a contract, we are basically obligating ourselves for that spending. And so, you can see that when we implement the software, we have software currently. So, we won't be paying maintenance fees or subscription fees to that old software. So, there's going to be savings. So, we have the gross cost for the total, city, county and IT. So, the total cost in twenty twenty-one is one point three, in twenty twenty-two, four point four, twenty twenty-three, one point six. And then it hovers about nine hundred thousand dollars a year going forward with that software as a service. But again, we have- But again, we have savings because we won't be making payments on our existing software. So when we divvy up the, the net costs, 70% is the county's share, 30% is the city's share. So that means in 2021, our share is about 379, in 2022, about 1.3, and then 420 in 2023, and then about 165 extra dollars. Now, that's extra. And so we're really asking you to make a commitment before the 2022 budget is adopted. And as Finance Director, I realize that I'm asking you to probably break a rule that I typically would like say, don't break that rule. So I'm sorry for the hypocrisy. It shames me inside, I can tell you. But I really believe that this is an important thing because of the transformational nature of the software, because of the momentum that we have and the investment in time that we've made to date. I really don't see us as having a lot of other choices. I think the other thing is, you know, this, these, the transformation and the savings really is going to take place when the city and county work together. So it's going to be problematic if, for example, the city approves this and the county doesn't or vice versa. So, you know, I'm, I'm asking you to consider that too when you contemplate this. This would be a 10-year contract. Again, you know, the, the total cost going forward once implementation is about 900,000 with escalations for inflation. So, you know, it's going to creep up each year, which, you know, generally software does. But this is really designed to be informational for you. We're not asking for a vote today. We had asked the mayor and the council president if we could have a meeting on August 24th for you to consider this so that, again, the goal would be that we could be working on the contract in the month of September and actually start our implementation work in October because we need to design the systems, you know, do all of the work on conversion. As I said, we're going to create a new chart of accounts. We're creating new vendor lists. It's really a fresh start, as I said, to the Finance Committee. The chart of accounts that we used when we implemented in 1993 probably was the same chart of accounts that they had used in, you know, the 70s. And who even knows how far back it went? We really, you know, like there's a time to really start over and it, we need to start over on this, but we, we need that time to accomplish it. So again, this just outlines, oh, you know, of the 300 some thousand that we need in 2021, we had $167,000 budgeted. We just got our final numbers this week on, yesterday? Yesterday, yeah, was when we.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So, you know, our goal is to find funding for that 2021 shortfall. One area is, you know, we had budgeted for our law enforcement software a number of years ago. That project is finally dwindling down. This budget, as well as that budget, has a contingency in it and we didn't use all of that contingency. So we're hoping to bring a budget modification to redirect some funds to, to plug the shortfall in 2021. And then we would bring to you our funding plan for the future years as well. So that, did I talk fast enough? Did I short it up?
Okay.
No, I'm sorry.
Are there any questions for Mary Ann on this? Again, you'll be asked to vote on the 24th, so want to make sure you have plenty of time to consider this. Okay. I'm not seeing anybody with questions. If you have any, you can find Mary Ann later.
Yes, yes. Please call if you have any questions for a stop in.
Okay. All right, we are moving on now to file number 191012. It's a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving assignment and assumption of purchase and development agreement of Thomas Street Phase One Remnant Parcels from Vestid Nest Property Group LLC to Thomas Street Duplex LLC Transfer of Property and First Amendment to Purchase and Development Agreement. Would you like to just give a brief summary? I know we talked about this at ED, but I think you gave a nice summary last time.
To distill it down, what you're basically doing with this last transfer or this third transfer after the original owner, which was Blenker Construction, you, with this first amendment, we acknowledge that the loan has been paid, the project is complete, the, we've already previously waived our right to first refusal. And so now with this first amendment, we're also additionally waiving our ability to approve assignments and transfer of the property. So tonight, you're just approving the transfer to another LLC and the first amendment, which then ends any further approvals by the city on any future transfers. But we still have a restrictive covenant on the property that if it's ever transferred to a nonprofit or a tax exempt entity, that they will pay a pilot payment. And so that, that remains out there for, that's going to apply to any owner, but we may not know who they are at any given point because they will no longer have to come back to us for permission to transfer the development agreement since there are no further obligations other than that one.
Okay, thank you. Maybe before we start a conversation on this, I would entertain a motion. Motion by Neil, second by Peckham. Alder Ryan, I see your light is on.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any representative from this company here tonight?
No, I think.
I'm sorry, I think they're out of state. I'm not, yeah, I think the purchaser is from California if I'm not mistaken. So no, I don't expect there to be anyone here tonight.
Okay, I was looking at the commercial offer to purchase and I guess in different real estate I've been involved in, normally you do the actual block and that information, the legal description of each property. I've never seen one that had all these properties at once with no breakdown on price. So is this valid at all? Ann?
I have no idea, but I'm not opining on the contract centered in between the seller and the purchaser. The city wasn't involved in all, at all in that. In fact, the purchaser was unaware there was even this development agreement that was recorded and it was the title company then that they were going to close before we approved this because they were unaware of the requirement. So it was the title company that brought it to our attention and said, yeah, you need to help these folks get this through to grant, you know, approval for the conveyance. So I, I have no opinion, I'm not going to render an opinion on the sufficiency of their contract. That's between the purchaser and the seller.
Well, I guess in prior sales and purchases that I've done, my attorney from the area would have said, this is not the legal description, this is the address and it lists all the properties on one offer for one price, even though it's 3 million something, 3, 3,745,000. There's no break in what properties are valued at what. And in my opinion, not as an attorney, but I, I do think it's inappropriate and probably illegal. So I cannot, until it's, it's, it's actually fixed, I cannot go ahead and vote yes. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
You can begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
All right, thank you. We are now on to item number 210809. It's a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving contracting with Applom PR to manage the Wassum Facebook page. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Neil, second by Watson. Any discussion? Alder Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Isn't there staff that could do this? I mean, we do have other department staff that have retained Facebook pages and, and I guess to be fair to, to others that might be willing to do this kind of work on the side as well as, I don't think the city has any type of vendors that are, are minorities or women that we're promoting as such that I, I do think we should be looking at other possible people to actually do this contract. Thank you.
Alder, Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. In response to that inquiry, this is an interim contract to remain in effect until our new director comes on board and can look at a possible staffing or other solutions. So this was a, a, a bridge loan, if you will. And, and FYI, Applom PR is a woman owned business.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question for the city attorney. I, I had voted against this in committee, but it was because of the discussion we had on some questions about serial contracting and the timing between the RFP in 2018 and 2019 and now. And I think there were some unknowns in, in committee. Do you know if we ever learned anything more about that or are we kind of just at the same knowledge base there right now?
I think it's the same knowledge base, Alder Killian, except that I actually did get the exact payments to this vendor from, directly from the Finance Department. So again, I'm just laying all the information out there in the, in an effort to be transparent and to look at it from a higher level. But as Alder Neil points out, I believe our new director comes tomorrow. This contract would be for $1,000 through September 6th. And then perhaps there, there will be a discussion about maybe doing another RFP or something like that. That would be up to the Economic Development Committee. But tonight, before, all that's before you, despite my recommendations in my memo, is approving the contract before us for the 11 weeks for $1,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
You can vote. Motion passes 9 to 2.
Thank you. All right, we are on to file number 201109. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving the 2021 budget modification for the purchase of Election Badger Book Electronic Poll Books. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Watson. Any discussion? I don't see anybody.
You can vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are moving on to file number 201109. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving the 2021 funding for additional engineering services related to the Fleet Maintenance Shop. I would entertain a motion.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a point of order?
Yes. First, I, I just wanted to state that I think we may have an open meetings problem in the manner that this item was agendized. If we were to ask ourselves, one, does the public really know what it is about? Secondly, is it about a high interest or controversial topic? And then third, would it have created a real additional burden that couldn't have been done to provide the specificity that would have allowed the public to know what it was about? So given all those questions, I would assert as a layperson that this does not satisfy Wisconsin Open Meetings Law and that we should re-agendize it so that it, it does do such.
Okay. Okay, I will confer with my parliamentarian.
I am personally of the opinion that it is sufficient to meet open meeting requirements. Well, it doesn't contain an address for the Fleet Maintenance Shop and I don't know specifically what your other objection is or what other detail you'd like to see in the agenda item. But it does talk about funding and for engineering services and related to the Fleet Maintenance Shop. So we've had resolutions in the past where we've named a location or we've used a legal entity name and not an address and other times where we've simply used addresses and not identified businesses. So it, it's been kind of all over the map and I know we checked into it at that time and you don't need to have all of it. You don't need to include all the detail. I think it's sufficient, but if the mayor wants to ask the body whether they believe it's sufficient, you can certainly take a vote of the body and you can.
I kind of, yeah, I will agree with the parliamentarians that it's sufficient, although if there's an objection, I would, we would take it.
An objection, am I able to make that objection?
Yes.
I object. And may I also, furthermore, 1300 Cleveland Avenue does not show up. I don't have it in front of me, but I'm guessing page 207. So if a citizen was to read the agenda, and we know that this is, one, a very controversial property, two, it's contaminated and it's surrounded by both vulnerable segments and controversy. And then, yes, three, unless they read to page 207, they would never know to be here or to be involved or to be able to participate. I would assert that this agenda listing does not describe much of anything. And even beyond the law, I would just say for common sense ethics, we should do it in a way where people actually know what we're conducting business on. Thank you.
Does this require a second in order to vote or are we good to vote right away on whether or not on this item?
No, he's appealed my ruling, basically. So you don't need a second for that. I would go ahead and take.
All right, so I might need you all to turn off your lights. I will read it for you. Mr. Peckham, we might need to turn your light off. We'll call on you later. Okay, so what we're voting on is whether or not the item is sufficient, sufficiently notified the public.
Clarify, Madam Chair. Is a no then that it is not sufficiently sufficient?
Yep, correct. Yep, so those of the, the opinion that the item isn't, is sufficient will signify by saying aye and those of the opinion that is not sufficient will say no. But don't say it, we're going to vote on it.
Are you taking comments on that motion?
I don't know that this is debatable. I, it is not.
That's bogus.
Unless you need a clarifying question, I feel that we can't debate it. Okay. All right, so again, if you believe that the agenda item is sufficient, you can vote yes. If you believe it is not, you'll vote no.
You may vote. Motion fails 5 to 6.
So it is sufficient? Yes? It's not sufficient? All right.
Right, so six believe it's, six believe it's not sufficient.
Okay.
So that'll be removed from the agenda and it will not be discussed tonight.
Okay, you'll see it in the future, I'm guessing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, we are moving on to item number 201109. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving the 2021 budget modification for the purchase of Hot Mix. Motion by Watson, second by Wadenski. Any discussion? I'm not seeing any.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to file number 210810. It's a resolution from the Plan Commission amending the general development plan at 920 North First Street to allow for a three-story, 32-unit multifamily residential building in a planned unit development zoning district. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Neil, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? I'm not seeing any.
Motion passes 9 to 2.
Okay, thank you. We are now on to file number 210807. It's an ordinance from Plan Commission rezoning 1111 Westwood Drive from a planned unit development zoning district to a suburban mixed-use zoning district. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Herbst and a second by Wadenski. Any discussion? Not seeing any.
Begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We are now on to the part where I'm going to ask you to suspend the rules. 6B filing and 12A referral of resolutions. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Motion by Neal, second by Watson. Ready for that vote.
You may vote. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We are now on to file number 200314. It's a resolution approving the Fire Department DNR memorandum of understanding for mutual aid and fire suppression services. Motion by Wadenski, second by Herbst. Any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any.
Begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're now on to file number 180914. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving shared services agreement by and between Wassa School District and City of Wassa for school resource officers. Motion by Watson, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Everyone's quiet. We're ready to vote.
Begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now on to file number 210811. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving advance ordering of 2022 vehicles and equipment. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Herbst, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Yes, Alder Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. For this accounting-wise point of view that there's a way that, under the encumbrance system, you can do a purchase order and go ahead and obligate it and put it on your financial statements for this year, 2021, without having to pay for it until when the items would actually be ready and then paid for in 2022. So this is a way to go ahead and do that, so to have that extra lead time but not having to spend the money at this time. And so then, it will show that way in the county, on the records as such. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? I think we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Now, I just want to make a note that Alder Peckham has let us know that public comment has been omitted accidentally on the last two months of agendas. So if there's anybody here that had anticipated speaking for public comment...
He did add it.
Yeah, I don't know where it is. But if there's anybody here that would like to take their three minutes now, I would welcome you. Okay. All right. Oh, oh, yes. Sure, I have two requests to speak, and I don't know that there's... Okay. But if there's not any resistance, I will allow these two people to speak. Alder Peckham.
Thank you. The public comment suggestion line was restored on the latest...
Perfect.
...agenda thing, so I'm comfortable.
Okay.
I'd just like to pile on regarding Alder Killian's concern about the item about the additional engineering services. And the criteria for that is that a normal person would understand what was going to be discussed based by, you know, just that line on there. And it says, "Funding for additional engineering services related to the fleet maintenance shop." And I don't think anybody reading that would interpret that as, oh, maybe they're going to look at moving the entire building, make a new structure on a new property, and take that new property out of contention for ever becoming, getting onto the tax roll, and contributing to the finances of the city.
I want to make sure that we're not talking about an agenda item that we are not supposed to be talking about, so you will have the opportunity. Thank you, noted. Appreciate it.
Point has been made. Thank you very much.
Alder Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say that for our neighborhood group, the Westies, we are meeting tomorrow night at the Reservoir Park Shelter, if it doesn't rain, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then for rain, it will be meeting at the Labor Temple. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have an announcement from our attorney.
I've sent you an email later this afternoon. We spent the day in mediation today in the Bhagavati case, which was the condemnation of the, during the Thomas Street Reconstruction Project, the gas station on Thomas Street. We think we've reached a potential settlement, but due to the timing, and you can read your email about the procedural process involved, it is reset for a three-day jury trial to begin September 14th, which would be our next regularly scheduled council meeting. However, there's more depositions that are supposed to take place of experts beginning tomorrow morning and Monday morning. So they've asked if I would make an attempt to pull the council and see if we could get a quorum together on Thursday evening at 4:30 for about 45 minutes to go into closed session before the SISAM meeting at 5:15 on Thursday. So please check your emails and get back to me in the morning, if you would, so we can respond to plaintiff's counsel. Thank you.
I look forward to being back here with all of you later this week. I would entertain the last motion. I have a motion to adjourn by Wadenski, second by Watson. That is non-negotiable. We're done.